And it tells me it's 100 pages long.
Ninety-nine.
And I promise we're not going to go through every page one at a time. We'll try to zip through this. But we have a lot of things to cover and a lot of things to talk about today. Okay, so we'll call a meeting in order. And we have a forum. Good. And let's see, are we taping?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to introduce yourself so we can? I'm Andy Seibert, the chair.
Stephanie Thompson, last year.
Dawn Reagan.
Logan Hill.
Susan Williams.
Okay, thank you. Liz, we'll call on you later.
Anjana Brulon.
Oh, sorry.
Anna Gombrich.
We'll come around later. Okay. I see we have some guests. Would you mind introducing yourselves? He's not a guest.
I'm Michelle Cooper.
Mark Poyham, is there, I haven't seen you in ten, is there opportunity for public comment?
Yes, you have two minutes after this.
Okay.
Chris Arnett.
Kathy Thompson.
Brittany LaFleur.
Kathleen Christie.
Okay, all right, we have two minutes for public comment.
Thank you. So my name is Mark Poyham, I live here in Maryville, I'm a user of the library, I'm a friend of the library. I moved here from Austin, Texas, and one of the problems we had in Austin, Texas, and frankly, one of the issues that drove us to move out of Austin, Texas, is homelessness. And in particular, homeless had taken over many public areas, including a beautiful, brand-new public library in Austin. And so when I read recently about a homeless service agency taking up office space here, and then this weekend, as reported in the Daily Times, an event to provide services for homeless here in your parking lot, I became concerned that somehow the mission of this library was being confused with that of a social service agency helping homeless people, attracting homeless people, and in my estimation, the worst thing that could happen to this library in DeBont County would be to turn it into a haven for homeless people. And I noticed in the restrooms, there are syringe disposal containers, which is something I'm not used to seeing in a public library. And I think that that is a step down a wrong path that needs to be corrected. If you want to help the homeless, churches should do it as part of their mission. Carm has a big building with a parking lot right up the street, but the library is not the place to be performing this function, in my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just second that motion, that comment.
Okay.
I will also share that I moved here from Salem, Oregon, very recently, lived in Oregon for many years. And I saw the library in Salem make many of the decisions that you're facing as well. And I recognize where a lot of the ideas for a community library come from. And I would just caution you to really examine carefully the things that you're exploring. I recognize that you want to stay relevant as a community library, that's important. But you also need to really pay attention to the needs of the community and also the wishes of the community, the taxpayers that support this library. There are a lot of different viewpoints, but you really do need to be cognizant of those that are out there.
I appreciate your comments, I'm not going to really comment on it. But I will invite you to come to all of our board meetings. And they're at this time, it's month, and you're welcome to come and hear what's going on and what our discussions are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we'll move to the minutes from the June 22 meeting. Does everyone had an opportunity to at least look through the minutes and most of the board packet? Anybody not have a chance to look through the board packet?
I didn't get through all ninety-nine.
I can understand that. Okay, any questions on the minutes or any comments or corrections to the minutes from June? If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Susan, we have a second.
Second.
Stephanie, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Okay, opposed? This is approved. Okay, we'll go on to my report, the trustees' report, chairs' report. This past, I guess, week, Anjana and I got an opportunity to meet with the mayors of the communities of our funding bodies and also the operations people of each of the funding bodies, that's Maryville, Alcoa, and Blount County. And they were all there, we had a really good conversation for about an hour, hour and a half. And we went over the plans, the construction plans first, which included the roof, and hopefully pursuing that and going forward with that as soon as possible. And that is on the county's schedule now, so we are moving ahead with that. The other four areas that we talked about was the restrooms for the lower level. Told them that we had plans and gave each of the people there a copy of the plan for the restrooms. We had, we talked about the book drop and the plans to redo the book drop. We talked about an elevator, the freight elevator going into the lower level, where we would be going, and approximate costs on all these. And then we also talked about the need for new trustees on our board and asking them where they were on nominating the new trustees. And that was pretty much what we covered. Is there more? We gave them a approximate idea of about a half a million dollars for our construction projects. Of the, of those projects, the county told me that I was not even close on the elevator estimate. They said that their estimate was somewhere in the $900,000 range for an elevator. And I estimated it at about $200,000. So it'll be interesting to see who, where we're both of ours meet. But we made that presentation to the friends and to the foundation, I'm sorry, to the foundation and not the friends. But I still stand firm with that amount. That was pretty much it for me this week. Oh, one other thing. I had a telephone meeting with Mr. Ed Harmon. I don't know if any of you know Ed Harmon, I think Angela, you've run into him or talked to him.
Okay.
Okay, anyway, he wanted to make a donation to the library in the children's department. And my conversation with him was basically that, thank you very much, I really appreciate that. But what I would like to do is have the library staff come up with a program on what we would do with the money. And he was talking about $25,000. I don't think we should be accepting any money out from an individual without a plan. And I would like to see the plan done and then talk to him and then go forward with it. I asked him if he'd like to fund the elevator. He said no. But... So I asked Anjana if she would meet with children's, step in on that for a second.
So what is it, I've met with Chelsea Tarwater and Carrie Godfrey in, from the youth services department. On Friday of this week, they submitted a proposal to me. And we're going to review it and tighten it up, and then it should be ready to present.
We're going to sit down with Mr. Harmon and present it to him and his attorney, take him out to lunch. And then one of the things that I would like to do is make sure that he understands that we don't do anything until we have the money upfront. So I hope that's okay with the board. But I just don't think we should be naming anything or starting anything unless we have the cash.
You can understand, if someone wants to donate $25,000, etc., you are asking them to help for a specific project, try to, versus, if I wanted to give you $100,000, I need to have a program assigned for that.
Would you mind taking your mask off for a second? Okay.
I'm sorry. So if I wanted to give the library $100,000 for a particular event, are you asking the library to come back with a plan to redonate that money or what? I don't understand.
So here's the thing. What we have come to find is that whenever anybody wants to give us money, we will take it. We will take it.
Through the foundation or through the friends?
Exactly. However, in saying that, because we want to, like, for instance, we have the $50,000 donation that was given for the gaming room. And that is now two years old because we didn't have a plan and it went from, well, maybe it's this, to maybe it's that, to maybe it's this. When Mr. Harmon called and spoke with Andy, he said, I want this to go to the children's department, period. And so it will be easier for everyone if we can come up and present to him, this is what we'd like to do, this is what it'll cost. And he goes, here's a check.
So you're saying you want to have a particular, options for him in a particular area that he's interested in?
Yes.
So, because what you said, it was like, we won't accept the money till we...
Well, definitely is acceptable.
We always accept money.
And it's still, even after planning is in place, we'll probably go for one for funding agencies rather than directly.
Um, well, I would imagine that we will, it would be best if it went through, depending on how he wants to spend it. It'll either go through the friends or it'll go through the foundation, just to keep things clean.
So are those programs that we're going to present to him also shared with the friends and the foundation?
Well, at this stage, what we want to do is we want to show him something that he likes and he's excited about. Then we want to get a timeline of when he thinks he can present the money to us. And then once we've got that, the next level is then when we take it to the fiduciaries and to the board. So by the time this board sees it, they'll know that the funder or the donation is coming from, it has, the project has the support of the funder. Now, if he comes in and for some reason, and I've already told the childrens, they can't paint the walls neon green. I said, it's got to stay, yeah, exactly. So I said, I said, you know, just because he likes it, you like it, it's still got to meet the board, it's the county building, there are... So nothing is, we've got, we're going to get everybody on the same page. We just want a very focused timeline on what the steps are going to be.
Is his expectation for you to provide a program, like, I would think we wouldn't want to commit to...
My conversation with him...
If someone wants to give you money, you take money and charge them?
My conversation with him upfront was, while we would love to have the money, I don't want the money to just be thrown into a pot for the library. I would like to have the library have a specific idea of what to do with it. And then we will present it to the board and let them talk about it. And if everybody agrees to it and you agree to it, then we'll talk about taking your money.
See, the, Mr. Harmon has donated several times over. And he is, pardon?
He's a charitable man.
He is a very charitable man. And in each conversation, he talks about how time is limited. And what is it, you know, the, we've got, I've got a look at the presentation, the youth services team submitted it on Friday. I wanted to make sure, and we've already met about it, so they are just getting finalized pricing and things like that. So that when we present it to him, we can get him excited about it, get him on board. Some projects we'll do that with, some we won't.
Yeah, it just seems like a lot of, where someone wants to give money, you don't have to kind of prove it and do all this work.
Well...
Seems like a lot of hours of effort are spent trying to sell.
No, 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 it's not selling. He called and he said, this is what I want.
It was a cold, it was a cold call out of the blue.
Exactly.
And I've had cold calls out of the blue before, and people want a naming process for it, and then we never see the money.
Yeah. Try, this, this is, I mean, we have, the gaming room is a perfect example of when we just take the money and then we're waiting for everybody to get around to it.
Well, it's kind of a good problem.
So I think, Susan, the thing is, is there is no problem. This is just an approach we want to take with this one because there are needs that the youth service department has. And it's $25,000 worth, so.
And he definitely wants it to go to children, period. No other discussion.
See, that's not a problem. My understanding was, we're not going to take your money until we determine, uh, uh, we're going to take your money, but we're going to show you opportunity where that money's going to go and hopefully you buy into one of those opportunities.
Yes, we are going to take the money.
Okay, that's basically my report. Any other questions? Okay, Anjana, do you have your report?
Did everyone have an opportunity to read my report? I'm happy to say my report was three pages. What is it, and did everyone have an opportunity to click on the links and see all the good work that people are doing? If not, I can show them, they're not, we got WBIR coverage. WBIR selected us on Social Media Day. So that is a feather in our cap. And that was one of the links, so if anybody wants to see it, I can play it or we can continue.
Yes, simply.
But this isn't some boring, old outdated Facebook page. Smith and her team are way too fun for now. Let's start with the memes.
Pretty much every single meme you see on your page is maybe a house.
Smith has a goldmine of memes stored on the computer that are ready to go. And she lives with comments and interactions from users who connect with most of you.
This isn't a dry sale, I'm telling you, people, you have luck.
That's footage from one of their most popular online segments, Bookface Friday.
It's a very scientific process. We start usually with one of those because they have so many faces on them.
And then they use their stockholders to imagine what the rest of that book cover would look like.
People had such an awesome response to it, they just kept it up, and it's so fun to do.
I even got to do one myself while at the library.
I think we might have it. I think we might have it.
Keep an eye out for me online, Angela. An interaction like this that makes the library's social media presence so welcoming, whether they're asking you to help name a plant.
We named him that, and it became like a name on the internet, and it has a touch on St. Jude. And Jude has had a son, who I think on our last post, he decided would take Hank.
But we're having Stevie Steed, the skeleton, go on dates with books.
That's how the book actually came about, we did it a few months ago. We just brought up fun ideas I absolutely love.
Smith hopes the fun they have online will lead to more people enjoying books in any way, shape, or form.
All kinds of reading are reading. So it doesn't matter if you're reading print or ebooks or audiobooks, you're still reading, and you're just glad you're doing that.
With nearly 55,000 library cardholders and counting, the Blount County Public Library is installed down any kind of street.
We're all very dedicated to making the library an awesome place to be towards the agents, because the agents go out and research and build their books.
Yeah, but men are a great library, you can build in Blount County, there's something there for everybody.
Really lets you know how good our staff is.
Good job.
They make it look easy, and I'm so glad. Um, okay. I wanted clarification in my report, I wanted clarification regarding the strategic directions. What is it, I gave a little bit of a timeline or a recap. And so basically, I just want to confirm that we are, we received a preliminary approval on our strategic directions back in January. Since then, we've, that was January 2020. Since then, we've had a pandemic. We are now in the middle of a leadership change. And so I would like there to be consideration that because we're so close to making a decision on our next leader, if we could continue to put the strategic plan or the strategic directions on hold and so that when that new director comes in, because a lot of these directions were shaped by the sustainability plan. And so they may or may not be, and we don't want to constrain. So.
Can I have a motion that we put this on hold?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
What?
Any discussion on this? If you looked at the plans, the goals, and the things that were asked to do, it's a tremendous amount of work. I'm not sure that the library right now has the staff to even begin to do some of the things that are in that. But it's a great plan.
It is a great plan. And when we had 52 employees, it was, this is, you know, that's how it came about. That was the foundation, it was coming on. But now that we have 39, it is best that we revisit when...
Okay, all in favor of putting it at hold? Any opposed? This is, I didn't see, come here, thank you.
My wife got out of work in time, and I was like, okay, I don't have to take my girl to an occasion, so. We made it.
What is it, I wanted to give everyone an update on the community survey. So when I typed this, on the 15th, we had 73 respondents. On Sunday, we had 154. On Monday, we had 222. Today, and I am not kidding you, we have 882.
Wow.
All right. So it's nice to see that people are loving the library.
If I can put in a plug-in for all those board members and everybody that's in this room, you know, please share that on Facebook or any kind of social media or word of mouth, I think that's pretty important to get the input from our community. And, you know, we all have a voice, so I would highly recommend everybody to, you know, post it or tell your neighbors or whatnot.
I'm meeting with Robert on Friday of this week so that we can finish the the protocols that we want to have in place for the focus groups, and then we'll start recruiting for them, so.
The link is also on the main page, right on the very, very, very homepage, right at the bottom, so there's no excuse to find it. If I can find it, everybody can find it.
And I can demonstrate if you like. All righty. Any questions regarding what I shared? There was, it was because the packet was so big, there were some things I left out, but we'll be touching base on them.
Can you zip over to the budget?
Okay. All righty, what is it, we are, if you go to the financial report, we did very well this year. We brought in over $12,437 in library-generated revenue, which was great because in January, when, and they do this every year, when the county asks us to give them our expectations of revenues and expenditures, we came back and we reduced our library-generated revenues to $79,563. And as you can tell, we exceeded, so feeling very good about that. Any questions on the financials?
Be a contributor to the revenue. Elaborate revenue.
I think that the cafe has really started, like, our biggest month was last month. And I think it's the people are getting out, and they just want to be out. I mean, you know, the WBIR footage, that was shot that day in the library. You know, and it was funny, for a moment, I had to do a double take, I was like, is that 2020 footage? Because I hadn't seen that much movement, but people are coming back, coming back.
Could you explain the COVID-19 grant?
Pardon?
COVID-19 grant.
I didn't hear that.
The COVID-19 grant, the $31,000.
Oh, okay, yes, so that was part of the CARES grant. And that was some, that was funding that the county received. And then it wasn't going to be put back into our budget. And then very late in the piece, it was, so I just had to add it to both sides. That is not included in the $112,000, by the way. I do want to share, Cynthia was very good and caught that in, there was, there's an error in the first page. I'm sorry, I moved on to a different report. Everybody wants to buy, I would like sisters, apparently. Sorry. Okay. Any questions on the finance?
Good job.
I have to say, Chelsea Mathania is our, we're upgrading her job description. She is going to become officially the hospitality coordinator, hospitality services coordinator. She has been the catering coordinator. And then as staff began to shrink, she picked up the kitchen coordinator. And then she became the elements of the public events coordinator. And she is doing an amazing job. She has a nutrition degree. She is passionate about food service. She is unbelievably thorough in the operations and cleaning of the cafe. And she is now in a position where she has the ability to make the choices quicker. And she is now in a position where she has, um, the ability to make the choices quicker. And so I think that that is another thing. We are, we are getting better at standardizing what's happening. And we are getting, um, the training that's more consistent going through the, um, cafe. And I think that that very much goes, um, to, uh, Chelsea being in the, move to the position that she's in, as well as Cynthia and the support of the paper and services, um, team.
And I think once people find the taste, what we, what we'll have to offer, they're willing to go along with it. They do a really good job.
They really do.
Rotary back?
Yes, Rotary is back. Uh, they wanted to enter into a three-year contract, but that requires many additional steps. So it's, we've kept it at one year and honestly, that allows more flexibility for us if there's changes in costs and things like that. Um, but it was nice to, to hear that they wanted a longer-term contract rather than a shorter term. We are seeing a pickup in, um, meeting rooms. Um, and with that, I'll now say, I, there was, there's an error on the first page of the stats, um, page. If you look in, um, at the top of the page where it says, uh, under adult circulation and then go to other electronic circulation reads miscellaneous MISC, you go all the way to May and June. It says a hundred ninety-nine and two hundred and seventy-five. Um, that is actually closer to, um, nineteen thousand each. So I will get those actual numbers and I will put them in and I'm sorry I missed that the first time. Round. Lots of beautiful numbers. Okay. Any questions regarding that?
Out of the packet included the new policies on fines and we'll talk about that in old business. Is that okay?
Um, yes, yes. I think that's it. Wait.
Okay.
Yeah. Just don't say it.
Okay, moving on, um, the board from the foundation, Angel.
Foundation board met in, uh, on July twelfth. And we heard from, uh, Anshadene, as you just had, giving us an update on the public community survey that was coming out on the search plans for a new director and on the port of trustees discussion on what could remain remain a fine-free library. And we also heard from Andy Simon, uh, as the president of the Board of Trustees, who really stepped us through the whole set of proposals that is up for review on ways to, um, improve the library's facilities. So Andy had just met with, uh, the contracted development person at C2R, Chris Soros. And he walked us through the plans for how the book drop might be improved, how the lower level might be finished and how we might move ahead with some previous projects like putting sound caps on the meeting rooms and creating an additional meeting space in the children's area. So it really was him sharing cost estimates and particulars so that the foundation board can be aware of what might be coming next and start to plan our fundraising and, uh, campaign appeals to shape what the projects are likely to be moving forward. Um, and the final thing we did is what we always do is just sit down and go through our correspondence and talk about where we are in our own internal planning for supporting fundraising missions. But it looks like you all are thinking of new directions and really doing some steps forward in terms of, uh, facilities improvements and the foundations that you could hear more about.
Do you want to share with them about our new, new link?
Okay, thanks, Angel. Bruce, you want to talk about the friends? What's happening?
We're busy.
Our, amazing.
Our, our job is to support the library, to sell books, to move books, to move donated and used books back out into the community. Um, we have a teacher's sale. We set up a special sale for this Thursday, two thirty to six. And, uh, we're in final preps for that sale right now. We kind of call that a special sale. Our next quarterly sale is the weekend after Labor Day in early September. That's the first three-day quarterly sale we will have done since the pandemic. Uh, our eBay group, online sales continues to be very strong. They're, and in fact, if you look at the footprint, it seems like they're growing every day. Coming up with more ideas, bundling romance books and all kinds of stuff that we used to have to almost throw away. They're finding out ways to sell them out there online. It's amazing to watch. Uh, if you haven't seen it, we, our lobby sales, which are near the elevator, are getting stronger and stronger. And the community market is, is rolling along. It's in, it's in kind of full operation right now, depending upon mainly weather and other circumstances. But we have our, our community market every Saturday out on the lawn of the library. We have generally between a dozen and twenty vendors out there every week. Um, we have, the, the new board will be meeting next week with our three new members. Um, the only fun we're having with right now is, um, our recycled vendor is giving us a few fits, mainly Mr. Burgess. Um, they're, they're, they say they don't have enough drivers, which is kind of everybody's problem. Um, and so we're kind of having to use pry bar on them to get them to get rid of our recycled books. That's pretty much it. Yeah, Andy?
You reminded me of something, Anshadene, that we, when we met with the, the funding bodies. Greg McClain, who is the operations director for the city of Mariville, happens to be one of your biggest supporters of your romance paperback novels. He was thrilled to death that he got a whole new collection. And he even knew what the red pages were, which I think we all learned that last week. Okay, thank you. If you haven't been to the market, make sure you go. It, it's fun. It's a different group of people than at the farmer's market downtown. Uh, there's all kinds of different things for sale and they even give away books for children, so.
But Andy is quite often buying cookies.
Yes, he is.
Bruce, is that this Thursday for the teacher's sale or next Thursday?
This Thursday, the twenty-second, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the friends? Hey, Liz, how about the regional report?
Good to be with you all. Um, as you can see, we are beginning our, uh, training sessions back. Um, our first training session at the office, uh, will both be available in person and online. August the seventeenth, we will have programming partnerships. Um, we'll have Keisha Parks from the Cleveland Valley County Public Library, as well as Jenny Gillahan, who's the assistant director at Obion River Regional Library, one of our sister regions out in West Tennessee. So they will be there presenting and that should be a good program. Um, we also have had our, we've had our libraries very busy lately. Apologize for all the deadlines. Um, so they've, they've had to submit the standard survey, which is an annual survey, of course, um, or their report on the process the past year for the state library standards for public libraries, non-metropolitan public libraries. Um, they, also we, um, have distributed and you find in your packet a copy of one of the annual documents, um, the library service agreement, uh, which is basically the contract between our libraries and the county board and the state to, um, receive regional services. So it outlines all those provisions, what we expect our libraries and the boards to do and then what they, the services they receive and return as being a part of the regional system. Uh, we are also in the midst of distributing and I'll either bring to you at the next meeting or send it to you via email for your signature, the official service area population, uh, document. And then we'll also begin distributing the maintenance effort document. Um, it's that time again. So this is a busy time for all of us. Um, our biggest news, I think, is probably, um, the ARBA grant, um, with, along with, combined with our tech grant. So usually you will hear me talk about our tech grant, um, which is a fifty-fifty matching grant for the state library and archives, um, for, uh, equipment, technology, software, uh, things like that. But we have two point five million dollars coming through the state library and archives that is available for our libraries to apply for, and that is part of rescue plan money. So what we decided to do was combine that grant along with the tech grant. So our libraries can receive, can apply for, um, the traditional equipment and, and technology that they would normally apply for, but they can also apply to receive, um, there's expanded categories. Uh, so print materials, digital materials, um.
Elevators.
No. Not elevators. Um, also some furniture, library furniture, but they're very specific requirements on that because, um, it's COVID relief money. So things like, um, furniture that would allow folks to be able to sort of have a private, uh, telehealth session or interview or something like that so that they could socially distance, um, and also have privacy. Um, so it's a lot. It's a really big grant. We're really excited about it. It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for our libraries. Um, and the exciting part is there's a reduced match. So normally there's a fifty-fifty match, but we are reducing that and it's, the match is based on the library level. So because Blount County's level five, top-tier library, they have a twenty percent match instead of fifty. So it's a, it's a really great opportunity for our libraries to take advantage of. Um, and much more expanded, um, for them to be able to get a lot of different things, so. Um, we also, I am also the state E-Rate coordinator for public libraries and E-Rate is a, um, we won't go into too much detail. It's a, Stephanie knows about it from the school system. Uh, it is available to schools and libraries. It's a federal program where our public libraries can, um, participate and receive reimbursements based on their local free and reduced, uh, lunch percentage. So, um, they can essentially recoup some costs back and get reimbursement for their internet and some equipment as well. That is a very simplified definition. Uh, but they also have, um, the federal government, appropriated seven point one seven billion dollars for schools and libraries, um, as part of our, also through, um, what they're calling the emergency connectivity fund. And so we've been telling our libraries about that as well, that opportunity to apply for that also. So.
What is that about?
It is for, um, off-campus primarily to bridge the homework gap. Um, so our libraries can, and schools, it's a combined, um, nationwide. So seven point one seven billion seems like a lot, but when you have the large school systems and districts that are applying, it's, um, it'll be used. They can apply for modems, routers, um, connected devices like tablets and, um,
What are Wi-Fi tables qualify for that?
No, it has to be off, it's for off-campus use primarily. So what about?
They're off-campus.
No, I mean, like, um, for.
Little Johnny doesn't have internet access in his home, so he can take a hotspot home.
And a tablet.
And a tablet.
Right, right. There are a lot of restrictions.
So little Johnny getting up from school or does little Johnny, can little Johnny come to the library?
Both. Both, both places can apply.
Both schools and libraries can apply for it, but there can't be duplicative services, so.
And there's also a branch that is where they can, as individuals, they can apply and that's new.
There's a separate program also for consumers. It's called the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program.
Yeah.
And if they qualify, um, that enables individual households to be able to work with their providers to receive discounted internet service and also a discount or money towards a device too.
So the school systems are tied into this?
Uh, uh, Logan, I don't know the answer to that question, but I would assume yes. I would hope so. All three school systems, you know, but I would hope.
I don't do the schools. I can just handle the public.
You know, the diversity or whatever, uh, because, I know our core system are looking at that, but they're really, really slow in terms of.
And it only covers, you know, um, certain, uh, the services only from July one through, of this year, through June thirty as of next year. And there are several hoops to jump through, but. It's, I, I mean, I, it would be nice. Um, you can apply for hotspot funding, which you normally cannot do through E-Rate.
So the hotspots, do you have to bring them back out through June?
No, but you have to keep them and cannot transfer them, sell them or donate them or anything for three years. And you also have to keep all of your documentation for ten years because it's E-Rate. Um, and there's also certifying unmet needs, so it's on the page and they have to sign a document stating that they would otherwise lack access and the library has to also retain that for ten years. There's a lot of different ones. Sorry.
Did not need to go into details.
You all don't need to know all those, but you feel free to ask.
Yes, and. And then the, um, uh, the only other thing I would encourage you to look at is save the date. We are looking at having our annual trustee workshop in person. Um, we did not have one last year, of course, due to COVID. And so the one that, we'll have four across the state, the one that is closest to our libraries in our region will be at Art Circle Public Library, as it normally is, in Crossville. And our date for that is September the twenty-eighth. It is on a Tuesday. So we'll be sending out more information about that, um, agenda and all that, but just to let you know, put it on your radar. And then, of course, you have our reads numbers on the back, um, which is our regional ebook and audiobook downloading system, which is the statewide consortium. And, um, so we were quite pleased as a region that we surpassed our totals last year. We were at six, a little over six hundred and twenty-four thousand. Um, so we were glad for that.
Business, gonna bring it up in new business, but is there anything coming from the government as far, for the state, as far as COVID's concerned, now that it seems to be coming back?
That COVID's coming back? I mean, I.
We've had, in Blount County, we've had, um, fifteen to twenty new cases in the last co, few days.
I mean, I know nationally on the news, you're hearing about the Delta variant, you know.
And Tennessee is one of the worst in the country.
Uh, for?
For new cases.
Oh, yes. Yeah, uh, I don't, I mean, nothing aside from just what you all would know.
No, no mask mandate or anything like that. Nothing.
We never had a mask mandate statewide.
I know.
So I don't know. I don't know. Um, nothing that I know of aside from, we just keep telling our libraries, you know, pay attention to your local, um, local government, follow their rules. If, if any rules come out, I'll let you know statewide and then, of course, CDC recommendations.
Well, we were really proactive in this at the beginning. You want to make sure that nothing happens. Okay, thank you. Any, any other questions for Liz?
Tell you more than you ever wanted to know.
Okay, let's go on to old business. Um, we have several things in old business. Let's jump to the library's director's search first.
Um.
Then we'll come back some.
Meeting has been, uh, very busy. Uh, the plan is to post the job online, the director's job online, um, August first on the ALA website, as well as some of the local, uh, this serves, um, and the Blount County Chamber of Commerce site and hopefully on the library side as well. So we'll be posting it in various places, uh, August first. And then, uh, the deadline for submitting applications will be September first. And the committee will quickly review, um, those applications on, um, September twenty and twenty-two and or twenty-two. Uh, we will be setting schedules up for some of the, uh, once the prospective candidates to interview them through Zoom, um, hopefully somewhere in the library. Um, we will narrow the choices down and October fourteen and fifteen, and you need to put these dates on your calendar now. October fourteen and fifteen is when we will be inviting the three or four candidates, whatever, uh, committee. inviting the three or four candidates, whatever the committee decides on, to come here to Blount County. And it'll be two full days of, of events and interviews. Part of the day will be spent with the staff, administrative team, as well as a forum for the staff to participate. We will interview those candidates separately. They won't all be in the same room at the same time. On the fifteenth is when the board will be interviewing the candidates. So there'll be a lunch for the board, as well as, at that time, we'll be looking at the questions that we will be asking the candidates and deciding on who's, who is going to ask those questions. And then we'll have an hour and a half to interview each candidate on the afternoon of the fifteenth. On the fourteenth, from four thirty to six thirty, we're still working on details, there will be a community reception where the community will be invited to come in and talk to the candidates themselves. We're going to give an opportunity with some type of rubric to the staff, as well as to our community people, to give us feedback on what they think about all of the candidates. We currently have a survey that will be, our meeting, search committee meeting is tomorrow afternoon. So we'll be looking at the survey data on the quality and characteristics of the, the director and pulling any of that information into the job ad that we might need as, as well as an e-brochure that we've been working on that has all the specifics about the job itself, the community, and we'll share that with you as soon as we get, get that completed. I forgot.
So hold open the dates of September fourteenth and fifteenth.
October. October, fourteenth and fifteenth. It'll be two full days and we really do want the board to, to be able to, to come and participate as, as much as they can in those two days. And I've talked to Bruce about the possibility of having some, some friends come in to do some of the interviews with the candidates as well as the foundation. So we're kind of trying to work out details on the schedule for those two days.
Would you like the link also included in the newsletter that goes into really talking?
Yes, that would be great. And we are using Blount County government's hiring site where they can go in and apply for the job and upload all the documents that are, we're asking for. So we'll be able to utilize and access those applications through that. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Thanks, Stephanie. Okay, moving on to some more old business. In our minutes, we had, we had tabled the six offenders policy that we had. We had asked Angenee to submit it to our attorney.
It is still in with the county attorney and we're expecting that we should have something by next month. Well, I'll be following up.
The other thing was the timeline review.
Yes.
Do you want to go to that?
Yes. So when we get to the timeline review, you'll notice that right after the public library service agreement, it says general instructions, but that starts is the printed report that was submitted on July fifteenth. It's the library standards. And the reason I printed off and included it this time is that because, one, it'd probably been a while since you, we'd all reviewed it together. And two, I wanted to specifically, just to bring to everyone's attention, on page five of that document under standards from planning, it talks about the library board reviewing the mission and vision statement every three years. And I wanted everyone to just touch base on the note that is there, just to plant that seed. Then what I also wanted to share is going through it, now as we continue to go through, we need to revisit our technology plans and our emergency plans. And so then now if you go to the very end, there is a policy review timeline. And what I did is I took all our policies and our plans and I broke them up into what is hopefully consumable, both for you all and for us, to be able to review. Being directed by the American Library Association, we're going to be looking through our policy, wanting to make sure that it's current, that it is reflective of our community and that its language moves from a more punitive to a more inclusive tone. But basically, the days where we have plans, like I'm looking at May, I have our personnel policy as well as our emergency and safety plan. Our emergency safety plan, when all said and done, will probably be about eight to ten pages, but the personnel policy is going to be a good read. But basically, you know, whenever you see plan, so it's the technology plan and the emergency plan that are going to be more, and then the personnel policy that's going to have.
Well, how do you want to review this?
Yes, so basically, do you look at this timeline?
What do you think? Do you want to print it out and give it to you individually or look at it online?
Well, so here's, here's what I was thinking is that in the month of August, in your board packet, you would have the conflict of interest policy, the gift policy and the code of ethics for the BCPL Board of Trustees. And prior to you getting it, this month, staff will quickly look over it or admin will look over it, especially these three, and see what changes they would recommend. And then those recommendations will be, you'll get the policy and then a list of recommendations for those policies so that hopefully it will be a, yes, we think you should do this. Yes, you should make those changes. And then we can just, so at the August meeting, the theory is, is that unless there is something that is really a stickle point, you should have the information you need to have, you know, discussion and then make a vote or to decide that further information or amendments are needed.
What's the easiest way for, for all of us to have this policy so we can look through?
Well, so I was just going to give them each in the monthly path packet. Like if you want all of them, I can give all of them to you, but.
What do you think?
Take them off.
I think the changes are, yeah.
It's very clear on, yeah, yeah.
Angenee, is that the personnel policy and the county personnel policy, does that include the staff handbook as well, or is there a separate document for the staff handbook?
The staff handbook is separate.
Separate, yes. So do we need to review that as well?
We will.
And job descriptions?
Job descriptions are usually as they're being updated. So for instance, I mentioned earlier this evening that there was one position that was going to be, so what we'll do is when we get a job description, we will create it, we will run it through HR to make sure that it is within the guidelines and legalities that we need to be aware of, and then it'll be presented to the board. And you're right, the handbook needs to be added.
And you said the technology plan, there's not a technology plan.
Okay, so. There, there is a technology plan and it needs to be part of this too. So the technology plan and the employee handbook.
Board members, do you all have this document? If you don't, then they need, because it, I don't know if you've seen it or not, but it does have just the survey that she's gone over and it also has staff competencies as well as all the policies and everything that we're supposed to have. So it's, it's not a very hard read, but it's got a lot of good information and standards.
One of them is, within this report is, for instance, ours, for example, is we are to have a image.
Yes.
Evaluation and it's time.
And there is one in here.
Yes.
A sample.
There is, you have a checklist. There you go, and that's on page fourteen of the report. All of the trustees, I mean, when we do trustee orientation, they all get a copy of that, but if you don't have one, I have extras.
Liz, I don't have one because remember we have to do Zoom.
That's right. I can get you an extra.
We don't have it in digital format in Zoom.
Yes, it is. It's available in digital format in a PDF, so I will.
Maybe just email it out to the group.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's okay. I have a box of them. Boxes. So if it's okay with you guys, I'll just tack on, you know, June twenty two, technology plan, not June, July, and then August can be employee handbook of twenty two. Does that make sense?
Okay, last old business is the fines. Want to talk about that for a second?
Absolutely. Okay, so the next page, it'll say the initial research in preparation for the review of overdue fines. You'll notice that in your digital copy of your board packet, there are seven links and they are active links so that you can see how this information. I wanted to present information to the board where it would inspire discussion, not saying we should definitely do this, but we should definitely not do this. So the first four links will just show you some of the most, like the overdue fines, advantages, disadvantages, and how eliminating them can benefit public libraries. That was the research paper that was actually included. Then the collection of research, that's where you can drill down and you can see the data that has been collected for overdue and wait times regarding the effects on families and children's and other information. And then what is it, there's a Forbes article and then there's the St. Paul Public Library. That's just an example of how one library presented their going fine free to their community. Then the next section, you'll see the Tennessee fine free libraries that, so these are three systems within the state of Tennessee that are fine free. And you can see again how they presented this information to, to their community. Then the next one is specific to our region. As of February fourteenth, twenty twenty twenty, we had, we had five libraries. Five libraries that were fine free in our region. And so I just want, and then the, the numbers behind them is what level library they are. And Edouard is now totally fine free, not just juvenile. And that's recent, so. Just to update. Okay. And then the information after that is specific to the BCPL. So in, I just want to share with you that the fines for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen, we brought in, and this was a full year of collection, was sixty six thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars and thirty nine cents. That is of a two million six hundred ninety six thousand seven hundred and thirty two million budget or dollar budget, which became approximately two point four eight percent of the budget. Okay. For fiscal year nineteen twenty, you'll see that it was the fifty thousand dollars approximately. That was for eight and a half months of collection because COVID, everything changed. And then that was, so that is fifty, approximately fifty thousand dollars with a budget of two point six million approximately. And the percentage for that was, it represents one point nine one percent of our budget. And then this last fiscal year, we brought in forty one thousand three hundred fifty six dollars and three cents in that line because you have to remember fines and fees are combined. So we are not saying that you don't have to be responsible anymore. What we're saying is we're not going to charge you if they're late, but we have to have it back and we expect you to return it in good condition. And so the, the forty one thousand is the total brought in for twelve months of being fine free. And so it has had a minimum, or minimal impact that we have been able to detect now. I need to also put in the caveat, we haven't been looking very hard at that because we have been adapting our services monthly. So, you know, what is it, it is, it has been shifting sands all the way.
What you were saying is that the sixty six thousand in twenty eighteen, was it including fines again?
It was, yes, yes.
And forty, forty one thousand, did you have any fines?
None. So what is it? So the difference between fiscal year eighteen nineteen and fiscal year twenty twenty one was twenty five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. Now, that's not something to shake a stick at. We're a library, we need every penny. However, is it most effective use? Are we throwing good money after bad? And that's something that hopefully the report that I shared with you gave you some aspects to consider and if it was worth all the work that it takes to get that twenty five thousand dollars. Maybe the goodwill and the access and the removal of barriers is more in line with our mission statement than, so that's something that the board can discuss. And then further, it just breaks down what we have spent in the last eight and a half months pre-COVID in terms of collection costs and the, the amount of materials returned, as well as the monies included. And so our collections has a return on investment of about six point seven nine percent. To date, we have approximately eight hundred and fifty eight patrons left in unique. And what is it? Yeah, and then it just says, you know, that we'll be tracking this up until the January board meeting so that you all can see. So any questions on that information? All right, so I did want to at least put in the record that with the, with the report, there were certain stats that we tried to see if our, if our ILS could do it or ATRIM, our online catalog. And unfortunately, we were told that if we took it to the second level tech and they proposed it to, so basically no. But it's on the plans to move forward or things to consider for them. So one of the things that we were hoping was to see if we could capture the time periods or the increase in, if we could capture the if we could capture the late return volume. So if we could say, say, and I'm just making these numbers up, but if say we had ten percent in fiscal year nineteen twenty, um when we were full, full steam ahead, uh but then when we went to twenty twenty, you know, um right now, the only thing we can do is base that on find collection. So um what is it? We are in talks with our ILS, but right now we can't get that data. Um we are going to continue to push, so that hopefully um we'll have data for you if that is the decision that is made. I wanted to share with you.
Is there any any uh way of documenting a person's late return? Since we're not gonna, potentially, we're not gonna charge any late fees, do can we track?
So that's what I was trying, that's what I was just kind of talking about. We are, right now, our ILS is saying that they can't do that. We are not giving up. We are going to start seeing if there are things that we can tweak within the ILS that'll maybe just flag it. So if we can run a weekly report and it shows how many people are late, you know, maybe we can do a count. But right now, the answer is no, but we're not gonna give up on that, because that's a, it's a very important. The thing is, is we might not have the historical data on what it looked like um when we were pre-COVID. Right now, the the stats that I shared in this first page are basically the ones that we have. Let's see, was there other? I do want to share just for everyone's, you know, uh refresh everyone's memory, that the Blount County Public Library's mission is to empower residents to think, act, and inspire by providing opportunities to connect to our community, participate in lifelong learning, and explore the world at large. With our vision being, we work towards building and su- building a sustainable community by celebrating history, creating connections, and inspiring imaginations. So I know that this was a huge packet. But I think it was needed. Is there any other information that you would like me to look for um regarding this consideration?
We had said that we were gonna hold this off until January.
That's right.
And make a decision on it in January, but just wanted to make sure that we're aware of what's going on.
Have you had any uh major issues with people that have reserved books and they're not getting turned back in in a timely manner, or?
I would be guessing. Let me do, I want to say that it has been a um it has been a concern that's voiced, but I don't think we've actually bumped up against it. So let me, let me get the data, let me talk with the patron services team, so you're not just getting my impression. Um but what I can do uh is send that out via email um to answer that question.
In work.
Okay, under new business, we have a library standard survey, talked about that. We have the discussion of strategic direction report, we talked about that, and friends funding requests.
So I want to make a copy of that really quickly. Um what is it? Uh if you'll jump straight to page, the final page, where it says technology, thirty-two thousand. And you'll notice I did not put in a program proposal for the thirty-two thousand. And that is for several reasons. One, I wanted to um put a dollar amount in front of the friends. Two, that money is loosely earmarked for ARPA. We are capped at forty thousand dollar match. And I am in the mad rush, because it's due on August twelfth, um of finding um the, or or getting the quotes. Um and a lot of it is technology, we're looking at automation. Right now, one of the most significant improvements this library could undergo, because our staffing levels have changed, is the implementation of an automation system. Now, if you refer back to your stats, you can see that on a monthly um circulation, we're at about, on average, twenty-five thousand um twenty-nine, thirty thousand books returned every month. Pre-COVID, it was fifty thousand a month coming through our book drop. Now, I spoke with Cynthia and she shared that maybe ten percent comes in the house, or like returned inside. If we can take, right now, a loose guess is that we spend over forty-five hours, maybe, and and minimum of forty-five hours per week, just pulling books out of the book drop. An automation system's not cheap, but this ARPA grant gives us an um an opportunity to explore. I just don't have all my ducks in a row yet, so I wanted to put it on your radar. You are not, if you approve the requests here, you will get a program for everything that's coming through that is new. So we have done the um the library ti- or the daily time inserts. I didn't include that, because this were now in our third year of doing it. So, but if you want all, I I can, except we were at ninety-nine and I just thought, so things that are new, um you will get a program for that describing what the program proposal is and what the funding is needed. Once um I have all the quotes in regarding the automation, the technology, we, I can see what is going to be covered by the technology grants, then I'll be able to build a proposal for you guys, and I will send that out via email um so that you know uh what I'm asking for, and so that we can get an answer by August twelfth.
We talked to Jennifer.
I've sent, I've got my quotes, and I'm like, hey, what about this? What about this? Yeah.
Do you all know what we're talking about in the automation? Are there any, this is for the book drop system. And Andre had someone come in and made a presentation, and it was incredible, unbelievably incredible. It's like Wizard of Oz. He was amazing. If if it works, are there any, is the library in Nashville set up with with this automated drop system?
Yes.
Sorts.
Yes, I mean, we, the new facility that we that we built has, well, I say that, it's more, it's more integrated into the the checkout system, so it's a robotic system.
Right.
Um that retrieves the materials for the patrons. I it, I'm sure it goes, I'm sure it goes both ways, but yeah, it's an automated.
Ours is nothing as good.
It's amazing, but it's because, you know, I mean, the archives, it's for the archive side and the other, and it's a huge facility, and it was.
This thing, when you bring a book in, you set it into this machine, it goes through, it automatically reads it, it takes, it logs it back into the library, takes it off the patron's card, it re- re-logs it.
It will sort it.
It sorts it by what it is, and it puts it on a separate cart that goes to the department that the book is from. It's unbelievable.
And so we're believing that the return on investment, well, I will wait till I have actual numbers. But we're exploring that, and I, because the timing is so, since I just, that that particular line item is a hey, you know, approving it tonight does not mean I'm gonna go spend it without using program proposals.
One other thing, we're gonna, we're, when we get this proposal from this company, we'll be coming to the foundation and making a proposal. One of the things that we talked about was that you could actually lease this equipment at a minimal percentage rate. And he was talking, I was trying to nail him down on the percentage cost, but he was talking the five to six percentage, the percent, which would be like free money. I just, unbelievable, I don't understand it, and but but.
No, sir, no, sir. This will be about approximately a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, if we can use, so if if we can, there'll be aspects of it that we're hoping will be covered by the ARPA grant. Then we have the opportunity, once we know what can be covered by this grant, the elements that aren't, then we'll be making um requests to um uh the foundation. And then again, now if we come back and that automation isn't, except, you know, isn't uh, doesn't meet the guidelines for ARPA at all, there are other technology needs that we need. Um so that's, yeah, that's when we would use the friends money. So that's the other reason why I didn't bring it all to you today, because I don't yet know. I've got to get the quotes back, I've got to, well, I've got four of the quotes back.
Just to clarify, this is not any capital facility, right?
This is not capital in any way, it's all technology and automation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, software.
Yes.
Also, is this system facing rocks?
Um well, in many places. Uh he is going to get us, what, it's in San Francisco Public Library, it's in a New Mexico Public Library.
Seattle.
It's in Seattle, it um is really big, all across Australia. Um what is it?
You're thinking road trips?
But I'll take San Francisco.
Road trip, Australia, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we we do need to check it out.
Yes. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Uh if you do want to check it out, FE Technologies, go to their products tab, and then look for their automation, and they do have some um video clips of it. But uh Mr. Skinner, the rep came out, he looked at our footprint, he is.
And laughed.
He looked at our footprint, and we talked about, he was like, well, can I move this wall? And I was like, maybe. But what if we didn't move that wall? What can you do? So um what is it? He is going to give us options. The other thing is that this system can be purchased in segments. That in itself causes other issues. What would be optimum for us is a seven bin um system. And that is because of the, like, we are buying this to remove the workload on the limited staff. So we need it to actually do the sorting, not half-sort it, you know? And so um I will have more information coming to you. FE Technologies, yes.
It's really, it's an exciting thing. It is amazing, truly amazing. And I think he was blown away with how many books we can, we take in.
Yes.
He just kept shaking his head on how many books kept coming through the book.
And there's gonna be um soft, well, yeah, I guess soft benefits included in it, in the sense that right now, because the book drop is was installed the way that it was, and it may be accessible from the outside, there are challenges with the way it is set up from the outside, from the patrons' experience, but also from the in-house, because we can't put anything under it, so those books hit the floor. That that room leaks like a sieve and has for eighteen years. So we are, you know, we will get a longer um and gentler use of our materials, which means a longer life, which is a better investment for the um money that we put into our collection. Not to mention is that um if it's not an RFID um book by Blount County Public Library, the chute won't open. So you can't put a diaper in there, you can't put a cheeseburger in there.
Probably good.
That is very good, that is very good.
And you can't put a bomb in there, or fire anything. It has all kinds of safety things. It was amazing.
Pardon?
A donated book.
Oh, donated, you can't put donated books in either, yeah. So we have exciting things going on in the next few months. Hopefully we'll, we'll have.
It's gonna be a C C talk.
Yeah. Hopefully we'll have some diagrams really soon. I've been talking to Chris to get some action out on all of these requests that we've been taking and paying him or something, and we haven't seen anything, so it's time for we see some things. Okay.
Now we're ready to make a motion.
Are you gonna approve all of them together, or like?
What do you want to do? Do you have the funding requests, part of them, or? Do you want to do them all together? We have one, two, three, four, four?
Four.
Okay, we have four funding requests. I have a motion to approve the funding request.
So many.
Is there a second? There's a second? Is there any discussion on the requests?
So this is just about these four requests, not the overall?
I think there are several more than four.
Yeah. So we have the four individual, but then there's these two that are not all together, the whole.
Like it.
Yeah.
Right.
So. I thought that Dawn said she, they suggested we voted on all of it.
All of it, everything?
All on them.
Okay, do you mind if I make a comment?
Sure. I know I'm not, I don't have a, playing this game. This is an unprecedented amount for an unprecedented year. And I just want to make the point that we have not funded the library. Last year was seventy-five thousand. So we're, we're, we're up in the tally. We're ready to support that, and assuming all you support it. But the fact that we were able to generate this and fully support it in this year is amazing. I I I wanted to just make that pitch very quickly. Taken a lot of work and a lot of, and and the young lady over there and her previous boss were key in keeping this whole thing going during that period, and just a half a dozen people on our side. But I hope you all appreciate, this is a new level of funding for us, and it is in a very unusual year. There's lots of lot, lots of libraries that are having to use their own reserves just to survive right now. So we're in a great position. That's all I want to say.
Thank you for putting this in too. I I would like to have, you all talk about this, some of these requests. After, uh we can vote and then you can talk about it.
Okay.
One of the, a couple of the things that I'd really like to hear more about is the hot summer nights and the calendar.
The, yep.
If you want to, you you want to vote on this first?
Well, the total amount being, if I can ask a clarifying question, the total amount being voted on is seventy-nine thousand that is on this double-sided programming sheet, plus five hundred, one thousand, ten thousand, and three thousand.
No, those are breakdowns of the. Those are just.
Yeah.
So earlier I mentioned that if it was new, then I included the program proposal. If they were reoccurring, so we've done them in previous years, like the summer reading program. I didn't include a program proposal because we've done that every year. So.
The requests are 79,000.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And it includes. Board projects as well.
And lastly, all of this, this 79,000 is coming to you first?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on this? If you vote. Favor.
I'm not.
We oppose.
Thank you, Bruce. Very much.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. Thanks for your comments also. They won't go into here.
So you wanted me to talk about the Concert on the Lawn? So Hot Summer Nights was a pre-COVID event where every Thursday night in the month of August, we would have a musical event. We're slowly dipping our toes back into programming and Hot Summer Night just sounded kind of sad.
We have changed it to Concert on the Lawn for this year because it's one. History Catch of the Day have been gracious enough to say that they will come and it is going to be an outdoor program. Thanks to our very well-connected executive and an assistant, just Creek of the Day is.
There's some other guys in it, too.
But they have agreed to, to come and give this presentation on the lawn. We are going to use dissolvable spray paint to section out six-foot squares on the lawn. In the hopes to, because no one knows what August will bring and so we just want to be. We're thinking of the community only as health, so. It'll start at 6:30 and they'll play for an hour and a half. We are, we are getting porta potties out there since the building itself will be closed. And then, what is it, we have let the county clerk's office know, we've let the mayor's office know. Cynthia has done a bang-up job in getting this organized. And we are thinking about offering foodstuffs, so like the bottled cokes and popcorn. Maybe if we can bring out the panini press and just make little cheese sandwiches or something, you know, something simple. And, you know, Chelsea is all about code and making sure everything's as it should be, so. Any questions on that? In that case, mark your calendar, it is August 19th. I'm sorry, 7 to 8:30, the band will set up at 6:30. And our rain date will be Thursday, September 23rd if, if it rains. So mark your calendars, we hope to see you outside. Pull up us photographs.
Yes, yes. Or blankets, yeah. What else did you want me to talk about?
Are there more? Is it just the one?
Um, what is it, there's the chalk walk.
No, no, are there more concerts or is there just the one concert?
No, it is just the one, just the one. What is it, Cynthia is in talks to have a, a ballet company, the Appalachian Ballet Company. Is wanting to do a demonstration. And then with the grant made possible through the Friends of the Library acting as fiduciary. We have a film screen, film screening that's taking place in early September. So for the programming's coming, it's just still being worked out.
Okay, any, anything else that we need to bring up? Faster than I thought. Any opposed? There we go, thank you.
There's gotta be Maggie.
Thank you for reading all of this and going. Thank you for the friends.
So I did, I did. On this one, because I'm, you know, how do you curate? I appreciate it. I think.
Yeah.
Well, you've done it, and you just do things, you just set it off.
You're saying this because someone.
I don't know. And I was not accepting.
He was saying that.
Exactly.
Single pages.
I thought he said he wants it on a single page. Just roll. You know, when I told Amy, when I talked to her, I was like, you know what? I don't think this is. Otherwise, plus, I need this to be in the list. Too much. But I think it was. Just like that, oh, look, you're gonna love this, so I cram it in. And then like, there's just this tiny little nib and I have to take.